Welcome, everybody, to the March 11th, 2013, meeting of the San Carlos City Council. And I've asked Chief Rothaus if he would to lead us in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Item two is changes to the order. Do we have any changes to the order? None. Okay.
Changes this evening, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. And number three is reports from closed session.
Mr. Mayor, there's no report from closed session, although the items were not completed, and the council is going to be continuing those items after the regular meeting.
Thank you. And then item four is reorganization of the city council. And just wanted to make a few comments, and then I'm going to hand things over to our city clerk for Mayor Grisili's swearing-in. And then we'll give some opportunity, I suppose, for people to make a few comments if they like. For myself, I just wanted to thank this city for the opportunity to serve as mayor this past nine months. It's been my pleasure to do so. To the city manager, Mr. Malpe, I've enjoyed working with him and carrying us through this time of the last nine months. I hope everybody thinks I've been fair. That's primarily what I've tried to achieve. I think one of the things that's a little different now, at least in my opinion, with the role of the mayor, it used to be we would expect some leadership on some issues and give the mayor some leeway on coming up with things that they wanted to see the city do. But now that we've, for the last, I don't know, five years, we've been doing the council retreats, and then more recently, we've been having some retreats where it's just the council and the city attorney and the city manager, to me, it's a little different because then you get this action that's of the five members coming up with ideas, and it lessens the need for the mayor, I think, to come up with anything. And really, that's the way we're supposed to work. We're a five-member body, and we make decisions as a five-member body. So I like the way that works. So my concentration has been more on the running of the meetings, trying to make sure everybody gets their say, and questions get answered, and that sort of thing. And even to the public, like, for instance, when we did the Transit Village, noticing that there was so much time given to the consultants and the applicant, I wanted to give equal time to the, especially the people from San Carlos on the east side, and that's why I did that, just to have fairness. And I've tried to do that also with the councils. That's been my emphasis. I hope it's been a good period of time for everyone. So those are my comments, and now we'll hand it over to the city clerk. Bob, I think you're needed down there.
You want me to come down?
Okay. Please raise your right hand. Do you solemnly swear that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the United States and the Constitution of the State of California, that you take this obligation freely, without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge duties upon which you are about to enter?
I do.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Great job. So now we have to do some moving here.
Some real reorganizing.
Real reorganizing.
I don't want to give up my space on the end.
You don't have to.
You don't want to. You get a lot of great room.
I started years ago where Karen is, worked my way down to guys.
This is yours, Matt, or is this ours? Is this yours, Matt, or is this ours? Oh, okay. Yeah. Oh, yeah. Okay.
Unless you want to, you know, be...
I don't really, no, no, that's okay. I'd just rather be myself. So it'll take a couple of minutes here. I want to thank the council for their faith in me to allow me to become mayor again. I was mayor once before. It's an honor, as Matt said, to be the mayor of this city. I've been a resident for 30 years, and it's where I am and where I will be. I appreciate the other members of the council. I think we work well together. We don't always agree. Someone asked me that, I think, someone from the press asked me that, "Well, now you're all in unanimity now." And I said, "Well, I don't think we're all in unanimity, the fact that we all have our different ideas about different things," and that's what I like. I don't think you could make a chart and say everyone's going to vote a certain way on every item, and it shouldn't be that way. I think we should all have our thoughts and our ideas, and certainly, the most important thing is we need to listen to the people who are out there, the voters and the citizens. And as Mr. Grocott said, I would much rather have folks at that podium speaking to us than us speaking to them. And I think that's going to really work itself out, hopefully, through this year. We've got a couple of big items coming up with different housing developments and some other things, and some infrastructure, and public works, and contracts with other cities, and anything else that the city manager and his staff can come up with that we can work on. Of course, as Mr. Grocott said, we have our, every six months, we sit, get together and set goals, and we've been doing an amazing job of accomplishing so many things in this city, and hopefully, this year will be the same thing. So that's all, only comments that I have tonight. And we'll be, anybody else wants to speak, we'll let them do it. Anyone else? Karen?
Yes, I would like to thank our past mayor, Mr. Grocott. Since I have joined the council, I appreciate your input and your guidance along the way. It's made it easier to step into this position from the planning commission, and I genuinely appreciate the time and energy you have invested in doing this. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Collins?
I'd also like to thank Mr. Grocott. I think he did a fine job, especially allowing people the opportunity to speak. I think he showed great respect for the public, and I congratulate him. Thank you.
You were starting to sound like broken records, but it's important to thank people for doing a good job, and I want to join my colleagues as well. Mr. Grocott is saying that I think you did an excellent job of balancing and juggling a lot of different sources of input to give everybody a shake.
Mr. Grocott and I have worked together for eight years, and so, again, I'd also like to, I don't think I formally did that, but thank you for your stepping in at a time when we needed someone to step in, and appreciate that. And again, as was mentioned, I think the main thing is to make sure that the folks out there get heard, and you're certainly a stalwart in that area. So I appreciate that. Thank you. Okay. So let's see what else we have here tonight. Next item on the agenda is council communications and announcements. So we would like to start, if anyone hasn't. Ms. Clapper, do you have anything?
Sure. Well, I've spent most of the last two weeks since the last meeting down in San Diego, and I had the pleasure of being able to use our public work director, Director Mr. Walters' information from the last meeting about pavement management, as I was driving around San Diego, where the roads are in miserable condition. And so I got to identify almost all of the conditions you had shown us at the last meeting, and was, came back and was very, very pleased to enjoy the roads around here. Thank you.
Okay. Ms. Collins, any comments?
I'd just like to say that I, my wife and I attended the San Carlos Educational Foundation's Spring Fling. Was it last Saturday or Saturday before?
It was last Saturday, I think.
Last Saturday. And we had a great, had a great time. I'm very happy that my wife didn't bid on anything this time. But I did donate money.
Mr. Grocott?
Just two items coming up on the calendar. Just wanted people to know that the, our Lions Club is going to be celebrating 30 years as a club in San Carlos, and I believe we're invited. I'm not sure which of us are going to be attending that, but that is coming up, and I wanted people to know about that. And then for the council, I don't know about you guys, but I keep getting these things from the library board that our FPPC notices are going to be due, so you might start working on those. Mine's pretty long, so it takes a few weeks.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of things up. First off, Mr. Collins, I'm sorry that those bids I put in in your name at Spring Fling, you didn't win any of them, but I'll try harder next time. I, too, had the opportunity to be at Spring Fling. In fact, I think quite a few council members and council candidates were there. It was a good program, raised a lot of money for the schools, and that helps makes our community stronger. I also had the opportunity this past weekend to attend the annual auction fundraiser for the Arbor Bay School, which, as you know, occupies the Kiwanis Building, and that was fun also. They held it in the adult center, and smaller venue, not quite as many people, but a very good time was had by all, and we had the opportunity to honor Pam Joy, founder of the Arbor Bay School, and for her work over the years in helping kids with special learning needs.
Okay. Thank you. I don't have any other comments. That I did go to the Educational Foundation, and I did bid on Brad Lewis. Why I bid on him, I'll never know, but anyway, I did bid on something that he was in charge of, so, and I was successful. Mr. Collins?
I just had one other question. I would like, maybe my fellow council members can confirm a rumor. I heard that we were part of a, an auction or a bid for, by someone, or an auction item that we were going to serve dinner to a group of people.
Didn't hear that one?
Someone asked me that today in an email, and I said, "Well, better that we serve it rather than cook it." So...
I believe that was for Kiwanis.
Kiwanis, yes.
It was. That's right.
Just fair warning.
Whoever won that has wisely chosen to not redeem it yet.
All right. Moving on. Item number six, public comment. Public comment is a time where people wishing to address the city council on matters not on the posted agenda. We like to limit this to two minutes, and I have one speaker card so far. If there's others, please bring them up. Schwinn Cosgrove, and I think you have a two-minute video that you'd like to play?
Yes.
Okay. Speaking on behalf of the Asian Art Foundation.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity.
You're welcome.
I'm a volunteer. I'm resident of San Carlos and a volunteer of the Asian Art Foundation. Our foundation is helping bring the Shenyuan, the global sensation, back to the Bay Area in the Warham Theater in San Francisco from March 20th to 24th. So I was... Oops.
Asma, you can... Thanks, Jan.
Yeah.
Now, the world awaits the divine culture's return.
Producer Jim Krill saw the debut of Shenyuan Performing Arts in San Antonio, Texas, on Tuesday, May 8th. He shared his emotional experience with NTD after the performance at Lila Cockrell Theater.
This is the finest thing, finest event I've ever been to in my life. I sat in the front row, and I was in tears because of the human spirit, the dignity, the power, and the love. Seeing all those people was astounding.
Fighting back tears, Mr. Krill says Shenyuan is the most powerful thing he's ever seen.
I want to go live in China. I want to tell them who you people are. They'll listen to me because they have to. This is the most powerful thing I've ever seen. It's the quintessential perfection of the human spirit and talent and perfection. The eyes of those people, all were so unified in directedness, the perfection of their fingers was flawless, like no one could do without the spirit of God in them. I am astounded. I mean, I'm paralyzed.
Shenyuan brings back China's 5,000 years of divinely inspired culture. Mr. Krill says everyone should experience this.
I just wish there was a way I could cry out to mankind and say they owe it to themselves to experience Shenyuan and the people and the culture of China that comes down from thousands of years. And today, I said, "I get it. Once the Chinese people find the true human spirit, they will bring peace to the whole world. It will come from China. It will come from the Chinese culture."
He says nothing is beyond this performance.
If I could say to the American public, I says, "If they believe they have seen fine talent, they owe it to themselves to see Shenyuan," because this is the profound quintessential end of entertainment. There is nothing beyond this. Nothing.
NTD News, San Antonio.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cosgrove.
Information I'll put on the table in the back.
That'd be great. Thank you very much. So anyone interested in seeing that, those performances, you have some information from the video, and I'm sure there's plenty of information on the web that could follow up. Thank you so much for coming. Appreciate it. All right. Any other public comment tonight? Seeing none. Moving on. Item seven, reports to council. Update on police services. Chief?
Good evening, Mayor Grisili, members of the city council. Greg Rothaus, police chief. Every year about this time, I come before the council to do an update on police services, and so that's what I'm here for tonight. You have my staff report. I'm sure I've had ample time to go through it, and I'll hit on some of the highlights of that report. Obviously, the first one, which would make sense, is to talk a little bit about crime in San Carlos. We measure crime by counting the Part I crimes. There is a list of the Part I crimes, and that's measured across the United States, and that's how we can compare ourselves with other jurisdictions and whatnot, and see how we're doing, and also to compare ourselves year to year. And here's a look at the Part I crimes in San Carlos over the last 10 years, with 2012 being the last year measured. And you can see that our crime rate last year was really falling pretty much along the average of what you see in the nine years prior to that. You see a significant jump in 2011, and I can tell you about 80% of that jump is due to petty theft crimes, misdemeanor crimes. One of the, probably the most serious crime that we have in San Carlos is robbery. We have very few of those. And robbery is taken something by force or fear, so to people's mind, they see somebody sticking up somebody with a handgun. Most robberies don't occur without, with handguns. They're people stealing, taking something from somebody by force. And again, our robbery rate has certainly been, is down from higher years in the past. And again, very few robberies in this community, thankfully. Burglary, probably our most serious crime that gets the most attention here, and certainly of late. And you can see what our burglary rate was in 2012. Again, if you take a look at prior years, is somewhere in between the high and low range. Maybe one of the higher years in the last 10 years is what we saw in 2012. We typically, when we have burglaries, they're not spread out evenly across the year. We typically seem to get them in clusters and then go for months with very, very few, and then maybe another cluster of burglaries. We've been having quite a few of those lately in this community, and really, across the peninsula, and it has been very frustrating. Unfortunately, there've been times when I've had to tell the community and the council that we have very few leads to go on. Fortunately, in this case, I don't have to say that. We do have investigative leads. We are following up on these cases, and there is some promising evidence and some promising leads with respect to some of the burglaries that have occurred in this community. I'm happy to take any questions on that you may have later. During the last year, we've been, had a lot of community engagement in San Carlos, the sheriff's office have. We've been at virtually every community event that the San Carlos has had. You have, many of you, I think, if not all, subscribe to SMC Alert, so you see our occasional messages on that. We currently have more, more people signed up for SMC Alert in San Carlos than in every city in the county except for two cities. San Mateo and Revue City have more people than us. So we use that quite a bit. Recently, had a school safety meeting. It was a very successful meeting with the school district. We have participated in national night out, worked with the Kiwanis on Child Safety Day, held a toy drive in conjunction with Vianquinis in Kiwanis. The virtual ride-along, which was something that just occurred within the last couple of weeks, some of you may have saw that virtual ride-along, and we'll be doing more of those, and movie night in the park, and a lot of other of these types of events and things that we do in the sheriff's office to reach out and form connections, positive connections with our community. We also do a lot of special enforcement above and beyond what it's contracted for in the city and above and beyond the patrol. We do occasional ABC stings. We send underage people into bars and liquor stores to see if they can purchase alcohol. Fortunately, I can tell you, it's rare that they do, but we do seem to cite two to three businesses every time we have that operation. So we do those to keep people honest. We do that with tobacco as well, those kind of tobacco stings. We have had two DUI checkpoints in this community in the last year. We had the recent concentrated saturation traffic enforcement program in San Carlos, where we had probably 18 motor officers out on patrol, working concentrated traffic enforcement. That moves around the different communities, and we benefited from that. And then we have, the sheriff's office has a crime suppression unit. It's a special enforcement team. That unit has been out both marked and unmarked capacities in this community over the last couple of months, and anytime we have a special crime event like we've had with burglary recently. Our future plans with respect to the sheriff's office are going to be increased use of social media. We have a PIO in the sheriff's office who's working actively to, with virtual ride-along, Facebook, Twitter, and really becoming part of the social media world. Shared resource analysis, we're look, because we have other contract cities, we're working, looking for ways to leverage our resources and for the cities and the sheriff's office to begin, to continue to save money. And I'm working on some of the, some opportunities for San Carlos this year. Comprehensive school safety planning is underway with the sheriff's office. The gun buyback program we had recently was very successful, and we intend to have more of those. New technologies are becoming on board with the sheriff's office for, as we expand, really, there is a greater need for crime analysis. It's very difficult for us, when you have a bigger area, to be able to remember all the names and faces, and you need more computerized and automated crime analysis as we grow. And so we'll be doing that. And then last, but probably really, I hope, one of the most successful programs we have this year, we'll be rolling out our volunteers in San Carlos. As you know, we contract for several cities, and a lot of cities benefit from contracting with the sheriff's office, but the sheriff's office benefits, too, from contracting with cities. And in the case of Millbrae, they have a very robust volunteer program that was just a big jewel in their community. And so we were able to basically absorb not only Millbrae police, but the Millbrae volunteers. Heading that program there, and now with the sheriff's offices, Chris Ko, and Chris is in here tonight, and she's also with several of the volunteers here that would be working in San Carlos, have been working in Millbrae and across the sheriff's office jurisdiction to bring volunteer services to the community, which I'll talk about in just a minute. So over the years, the volunteer program has, and the sheriff's office has grown to include community patrol, school patrol, vacation house checks, traffic control, and a lot of other administrative duties that keep the sworn deputies focused on enforcement duties. Our volunteers are trained not to take enforcement action. In fact, they're trained to go the other way, but they're trained to be very, very good witnesses. As it relates to rolling them out in San Carlos, our first thing we want to do is work with the schools to keep speeds down in the school zone. So that's kind of phase one of rolling out the volunteers, and you'll see that shortly. We will be using volunteer patrol vehicles, all marked in white saying "volunteers" and policing, and we'll be at school zones, making sure that we have signs out to monitor speed to help keep traffic speed down. Downtown business patrol and foot patrol, we've done some of that in the past, and we'll continue to that, to do that. What I hope to be able to do in the near future with the sheriff's office is to bring back vacation house checks, residential patrol, and a presence in that area. We used to do that, the police department used to do vacation house checks, so that if you went on vacation, somebody would come by, make sure that everything was in order, and check your house. We just didn't have personnel. But bringing the volunteers really positions us to be able to do that. So that's an exciting plan for us this year, and you'll begin to see some of that very soon. So that's my presentation for tonight, and I'm happy to take any questions.
Questions for the chief?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, chief. Just a couple of quick questions. Have you gotten any sense anecdotally from schools and parents? I know that was an issue last year. It was one of the reasons we brought the second motor unit in, was to augment safety patrols around schools and whatnot. So just curious if there's any feedback on that. We have, we had, we don't have any data that I'm comfortable with, but certainly, anecdotally, we do with people talking a lot about how they've seen the increased enforcement. Our deputies now will work speed zones that they used to work a year ago and see much slower speeds, write much fewer citations. I think I've heard from people at City Hall who commute to work and can see the difference. Even people at City Hall have slowed down, so... Not that they were ever exceeding the speed limit to begin with. No. So it's, it's certainly, it's certainly out there, and people are well aware of our traffic enforcement posture and the fact that the council's very serious about it, and that's evident by the second, the investment in the second motor position. And my other question was, since this is an opportunity both for the folks who are here and for anybody watching this at home, to give you a chance if there's any advice, simple advice you'd like to give people who are concerned about the risk of burglaries and whatnot in San Carlos to... Well, as it relates to general overall safety advice that I give people who live in San Carlos, is the first thing that they can do if they want to be safe is don't move out of San Carlos. We have one of the safest communities around. We're very, very fortunate. However, when burglaries come like that, they're very unsettling to people. If it's ever happened to you, it's happened to me at my house, not here in San Carlos, but when I lived in Birmingham. It's extremely unsettling and disturbing, and so I don't want to downplay that, but I want to make sure that the stage is set, that this is a very safe community to live in. I think with respect to burglaries, the most important thing is to really know and understand, take security measures in your own home. The use, making sure doors are locked. A lot of our burglaries occur to locked houses, but some don't. Some occur to unlocked houses. People can entertain the concept of security alarm systems. That's something they can consider. Knowing your neighbors and knowing your neighborhood, not being afraid to report something that doesn't, that looks out of place. One of my biggest concerns has been illegal solicitors in this community. I think they're used often as a ruse to commit burglaries. I consider them very seriously, and fortunately, we've had strong support from the city attorney on that. The city attorney is prosecuting misdemeanors on people who engage in illegal soliciting, and some have even have warrants for their arrest right now. So we take a strong posture on that. We need the citizens to take a strong posture on illegal soliciting and make sure they call us anytime anybody comes to their door and tries to sell something. But again, knowing your neighbors and not being afraid to call, knowing your neighborhood when something just doesn't look right. So many times, people said, "You know, I saw something. I just, I was going to call, but I didn't want to bother you." And that's a shame when that happens. Thank you.
Any other questions?
I have a few down here.
Okay. Karen, do you have?
I just want to commend you for having already started working on goal number two from our strategic plan that we haven't even approved yet, and to provide effective and sustainable public safety, so...
Thank you very much.
Good job.
Mr. Grocott?
I just wanted to ask a few questions here. At one point, I'd noticed the labeling of our vehicles had changed, and I talked to the city manager about that, so he updated me on it. But I was just wondering if you could say a few words about our, just the deployment of what we used to consider, you know, our vehicles, but obviously are now part of the sheriff's department, and how that's been handled and so forth.
Okay. When we first transitioned about a little over two years ago, we kept the sheriff's, we put a sheriff's office logo and a San Carlos Patrol Bureau, and the San Carlos logo on the cars. When Millbrae transitioned, they did the same thing, so they had the sheriff's office star and Millbrae police on the cars. In conversations, and what's happening out in the field is the confusion that relates sometimes from, when we cover other areas, San Carlos covers other areas, the sheriff's office, because they cover us, so we reciprocate at times. We'll show up with a San Carlos car, and they want to know, "Why is San Carlos police in my jurisdiction?" Or, "Why is Millbrae police in our jurisdiction?" So there was some level of confusion with respect to that. Also, when I talk about shared resource and the ability to cut costs, by having a uniformly marked fleet that can go from any, any one of our bureaus allows us to have more flexibility with our cars and extend our vehicle life. So what you saw with San Carlos, with the tradition, transition of patrol vehicles from San Carlos vehicles to sheriff's vehicles, it also occurred in Millbrae as well. So now we have, our cars are marked exactly the same. They can use our cars, we could use their cars, and that adds a flexibility, and certainly decreases some of the confusion out there.
And I suppose that would also apply to motorcycles and our SUV and so forth?
Correct.
Correct. Okay. I've had questions before, and I've even looked into this, sexual offender locators. There's some websites that are, seem to be privately owned. Does the sheriff's department keep anything like that active, or what are the resources for parents on that?
We're actually actively involved right now in a new system called Offender Watch. And in fact, I just was meeting with our detective this morning about that program. That is a very robust, excellent software program for managing sex offenders in communities. And so we're involved in populating that database and beginning to use that. It's well above and beyond what Megan's Law provides. It's well above and beyond what the Department of Justice provides, and it's something the sheriff wants to do. In fact, the sheriff will be offering to buy the software, I believe, for any community that is interested in using it. And I think it's on the lines with what you're hoping... in using it. And I think it's on the lines with what you're hoping for, which is, you know, stronger accountability and stronger tracking of these offenders.
Right. Because some of the websites that I tried out seem to be used for almost a ruse to capture you into, well, if you, you know, you can do so much, but then if you want to pay, or it seems to be, you know, directing you towards something you're really not after, and then you don't get the information you're after. So I was wondering, is the sheriff's department working on anything that would make public access to that kind of information through public agency?
It is. And it's also going to be much more current and much, and populated much quicker than Megan's Law database. So again, I just saw a presentation on that. We hope to have that fully populated with all sex offenders in the jurisdiction somewhere in May. And, you know, it can do things such as search MO types. So depending upon what the suspect, what particular type of proclivities a suspect has as it relates to sex offenders, sex offenses, that we're able to search those kinds of MOs and just a whole bunch of things. It's a good tool. And the community will have, we will have law enforcement view of it so we can see everything. And the public will have a view of Offender Watch as well. And they won't see as much as we can see, but they can see enough to be able to manage their lives and make decisions.
And my last question has to do with Neighborhood Watch. You talked about the volunteers. I did notice, for instance, we recently had an incident in Belmont that I think our officers were involved with as well, where burglars from Oakland had come over and they were knocking down doors. And Belmont had some kind of system where they were able to notify their neighborhoods about that. And that's how, as I understand it, these fellows got caught. I know at one time we had some neighborhood organizations trying to do Neighborhood Watch and there were some pros and cons to that. So could you comment on that?
We do have some Neighborhood Watch groups that are pretty active and they come up and down depending upon what's occurring. White Oaks, L'Oriola area, an area west of Alameda near Howard, kind of that area. And then recently, a resident from the area of Dartmouth, Rundle area up there, up in the hills up there, has approached the sheriff's office here at the bureau and I spoke with her about starting a Neighborhood Watch in their area. So there's, there is an interest in Neighborhood Watch in this community. It tends to kind of ebb and flow based upon what's happening with any particular crime in any particular area. And when things quiet down, the Neighborhood Watch is kind of quiet down. They have their own communication systems that they use sometimes. I think Nextdoor is some that people use and, and other email exchanges that they do with each other. We also have communication with them through SMC Alert and through email communications. So there's a variety of methods of which we communicate and which they communicate with each other.
How does that fit into your volunteer program? And second, and last question regarding Neighborhood Watches, is there any kind of training program to, sort of like CERT, but on the level of this is what you should be looking for, these are the kind of things to call about, these are the kind of things, you know, don't bother or whatever?
Right. Well, they're a little bit different. Neighborhood Watch is a little bit different than the volunteers in that the volunteers work for the sheriff's office. I mean, they volunteer their time and they're helping support our sheriff's office mission. So they're out there in the community supporting, actively supporting the sheriff's office mission. Neighborhood Watch is more along the lines of people who, who with their neighbors have decided they're going to keep an eye on each other and they're going to take responsibility for safety, for safety in their neighborhood. And so there's the kind of the difference we're doing. I'm sorry, I forgot to...
Oh, if we, if the sheriff's office offers any kind of training for...
We do. Every time we go out to a Neighborhood Watch meeting, we bring, we bring information, first of all, about crime in that particular neighborhood. What has been going on? How does it compare year to year? And in fact, we've even gone far as to brief on a particular burglary. I remember doing a crime, a Neighborhood Watch presentation in Lori Oaks neighborhood where I actually spoke about each burglary that occurred in their neighborhood and brought information about how to prevent burglary, how to prevent crime in their neighborhood. We brought maps to pin those, to show how many burglaries they've had over the course of time, where those burglaries have occurred, what they can do to protect themselves. And that, so that always occurs when we're at a Neighborhood Watch meeting.
Very, thank you.
Mr. Collins?
Thank you for a great presentation, Mr. Chief Rothus. Just one question on the burglary statistics. Do you guys keep track of, like, how many homes with or without alarm systems get broken into? I mean, in other words, do you keep also track of, like, how many homes were locked, unlocked, and had alarm systems? Is there any way of sort of gauging how effective, obviously, locking your doors could be? But I'm just wondering, are homes with alarm systems any, any less susceptible to break-ins?
Well, we have at some level and some level not. So I'll tell you, with respect to burglaries, I can tell you somewhere around half of them tend to be commercial burglaries. So they're not all burglaries in the residential area. So it's breaking into a business. But another example of a commercial burglary, like I wrote in the staff report, anybody who enters any store, we can show with the intent to steal when they're in there. And they come out with merchandise, that's a burglary, even though it occurred, they walked in and out just like anybody else. So half of them are commercial burglaries, we keep that in mind. Then with respect to the residential burglaries, at one point I did take a look at that and found that somewhere around half of the homes were unlocked homes and they were entering into unlocked residences. And that just makes it easier. But what's happening in this case, you know, we give a lot of, we give a lot of advice, it's frustrating us, locking your doors and making sure your house is locked. Now we've got all these door kick burglaries where people are just kicking through these locked doors. So making sure that you're going to have a robust lock mechanisms and make it very, very difficult for people to get in. And in terms of alarm systems, I don't have that evidence with respect to alarm systems, you know, but I think they're a good deterrent and that's something each family has to make an economical decision and just a family policy decision about whether they want to do that for themselves.
Well, we have one and I was surprised at how inexpensive it is to, not only to install, but to maintain. It's not very expensive at all. And then one last thing that I, I, in the next couple of days, like, just talk to you offline about.
Okay.
Maybe we could just, we could chat by phone.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Chief, thank you very much. Appreciate your report. And thank you, folks, for coming tonight. You don't have to stay for the rest of the meeting. You can if you want. But thank you for all the work that you do and for aiding our community and helping protect it. Thank you very much. Thanks, Chief.
Thank you.
Okay. The next item on our agenda is approval of consent calendar. Consent calendar items are considered to be routine and will be enacted by one motion. No separate discussion on these items unless members of the council staff or public request specific items be removed for separate action.
What was that again?
That was a disclaimer.
Mr. Mayor, there, just as a reminder, there's one ordinance for adoption that needs to be read.
That G, Mr. City Attorney?
Yes.
All right. So I would entertain a motion for the other items, A through F and H, if it's appropriate.
So moved.
I need a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded to approve items A through F and H on the consent calendar. Any discussion on those items? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Close? Abstain? Okay. Item G, we need to read that. Someone want to do that?
I'll move approval of item G, which is an ordinance of the city of San Carlos, 1456, to amend and replace chapter 2.28 of the San Carlos Municipal Code regarding emergency organization and preparedness.
There a second?
Second.
Discussion on this item? Hearing none. All those in favor say aye.
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 Closed? Abstain? Okay. Thank you. Next item on our agenda is a public hearing, consideration of adopting ordinance number 1455, adding chapter 8.28 to the San Carlos Municipal Code reusable bag ordinance. Mr. Mora?
Thank you, Mayor Griselli and members of council. On tonight's agenda, as the mayor indicated, is adoption of ordinance 8.28, which would add the reusable bag ordinance to the city San Carlos Municipal Code. As a footnote, the reason this is on your action calendar versus consent is that this is adoption of an ordinance at the county by reference and under state law. That has to be done at a public hearing. So we'll recommend that after the brief staff report, you open the public hearing and then have discussion and take action. I should mention that since the last time you met, when we had 11 of the 18 cities in the county that have retailers adopt this ordinance, we now have three more. In addition to San Carlos introducing the ordinance, Burlingame introduced the ordinance a week ago and tonight Redwood City is planning to introduce the ordinance. Of the four remaining cities, two have discussed it and the other two have it slated for upcoming meetings. So staff anticipates that within the next 30 to 45 days, all 18 agencies will have adopted this ordinance. I can also mention that Mr. Peterson from County Environmental Health is also with us again tonight if you have questions for him. So I'd be happy to field any questions or if not, let you open the public hearing.
Okay. Mr. Mora, questions for Mr. Mora or Mr. Peterson?
I have a few.
Mr. Grokot?
I had a few questions on this that, the first one was, you'd mentioned the other cities. Could you update us on Woodside and their decision to adopt, it seemed to me they were adopting the ordinance, or introducing it anyways, one of the two, but they had eliminated, or they were talking of eliminating the requirement for paper bags to be purchased and managed and so forth?
My understanding, Councilmember Grokot with Woodside, and I'll ask Mr. Peterson perhaps to amplify since he probably knows better than I, is that they are considering eliminating the charge, but that, of course, would mean they would need to fund an amendment to the EIR and do their own enforcement, I believe. Is that...
That's correct. Okay. So they're bringing it back at a subsequent meeting?
Okay. So they're bringing it back at a subsequent meeting.
So just to be clear then, if the, if the part about bag purchases taken out, then the EIR doesn't act as an umbrella anymore?
Correct. Correct. And also the city is responsible for the cost of enforcement.
Enforcement in what respect?
Well, the way the, the way this county ordinance works is the same way that the one that you adopted as a council last year on the polystyrene. And that is, if you adopt the county ordinance as is in toto, the county does all the outreach, they do all the education and they do what's called the initial enforcement at their cost. In other words, it's free to the city. This ordinance works the same way. If San Carlos or Woodside or anyone else adopts the ordinance as is, the county pays for the environmental document, they pay for the outreach, they pay for the education, they pay for the initial enforcement. If, on the other hand, a city decides to do their own ordinance or modify this ordinance, which, as we talked about last time, is a choice you have, then you will have to pay to modify the environmental document and you will have to pay for your own outreach and enforcement. So same sort of principle as...
I'm sorry, I'm still not catching what the enforcement is. So the enforcement is what?
The way the ordinances work is if you're under the county's umbrella, let's call it that, they go out and work with the retailers, they provide the educational information and if there is a violation, they'll issue the ticket or the fine. If you have your own ordinance, let's use...
I'm sorry. So you're, I'm sorry, I'm hearing the same thing. But what I'm not hearing is what is the enforcement? Is...
Using plastic bags.
Okay. Is that it? Is that the enforcement?
I don't know.
Yeah, I don't know.
Yeah, if you violate, yeah, if you violate the ordinance, including, you know, you know, offering plastic bags after the effective date, there, you get warnings and eventually there's a series of fines. First one's $100, the second one's $200, third violation $500.
Okay. Thanks for clearing that up. I wasn't, because my, my view of the enforcement to the question was about the paper bags and are you selling them and so forth. So what you're saying, there's enforcement also with the fact of, do you give out plastic bags or not and so forth? I got it. So that's, that seems a little different than, Ms. Clapper asked a similar question last time and the answer seems to be slightly different. Because didn't you ask about the thing about...
Remind me what I asked.
Well, I thought, I don't know, I could be wrong, you know. I thought you'd asked something similar about changing, not, not specifics, but is there things we could change and still fall under the environmental impact report? But it seems you can't change very much, if at all. Didn't you ask that, something about that?
I have asked that.
Okay.
And at a variety of times. So I can't remember exactly if I did that here, but yes. And, and I was told the same thing, that it's, it's, it changes, the EIR has to be amended. And so it makes it, it's kind of like, okay, well, just throwing the baby out for the bath water to accomplish those things. So...
And to be clear too, you said it would, there would be a charge for, or a cost to go through some kind of amendment process with the EIR, but it wouldn't necessarily require a whole new EIR?
That would be our recommendation to the council is that you amend it. I wouldn't think, I mean, again, obviously we have to work with Mr. Rubens, but I wouldn't think you'd have to start from scratch. I would think you could...
Do we have any concept at all what the cost would be if we were to do?
I think if we had to do it from scratch, the estimate is something like $50,000. I would imagine that an amendment, just guessing here, is maybe more in the $15,000 to $25,000 range. I'm just guessing now.
Okay. All right. And then one of the other questions I had, and I meant to ask this the last time and didn't get around to it or didn't think of it at the time, was Recology announced not too long ago about launching a plastic bag recycling program. Can you give us an update on that and how, I'm a little curious why they went through that process if they thought we were going to be, and not just us, but all the cities were going to be going through this process of eliminating plastic bags, but they're launching a program to recycle them?
This was a program through, actually SBWMA, Rethink Waste. And in talking to Mr. McCarthy, who's the director there, he felt that until the cities all have an ordinance, that it would be a convenience for residents to go to Sharaway Center and bring their bags. So you're right, they can do that. And as council probably knows, there are a number of services that are provided if you go to Sharaway Center. That's a new one.
So it was going to be a service, or it is a service, that you have to collect together your bags and take them there? It's not...
Yes.
Something that's done through, you know, a lot of lobbies in, or not lobbies, but checkout areas of grocery stores have places where you can deposit your plastic bag if you want. It wasn't going to include that or...
No, no. This is simply you bring it to Sharaway Center.
Did they spend very much money on launching this?
They issued a news release and used their social media and various channels. They told the reporters it did run on some of the newspapers. So there was some publicity about it at the time.
Was publicity was the only thing or...
I'd have to check with them, but the things that I saw from them were the news release, Twitter, Facebook, and some stories and outlets like the Daily Journal, the San Carlos Patch, things like that. So...
But was there any, is there any equipment or anything that they need to have installed in order to do recycling of these bags? Or do they just collect them and then ship them out someplace?
My understanding is it's the latter. They collect them.
Okay. I was curious. And then my final question is, I was trying to do some research on this over the weekend, but looking up, trying to get more information about recycling products and, and the plastic bags that are decomposed, that can be either decomposed, I guess there's a difference between decomposed and compostable. But SB 567, this Senate bill by DeSulmer, recycling plastic products and the requirement that has to be for labeling and so forth of plastic bags that are recyclable, do you do...
My understanding is that as we've seen in the last four or five years, there is legislation. The bill you talk about is one of them. There are some others that are pending. To date, none of them have gotten as far as the governor's desk. So, you know, we will see if they do, although my understanding, and again, Mr. Peterson may be a little more informative than I on this point, that in many cases, those don't take effect till several years down the road. Is that fair? Yeah.
So is there anything though that tells Californians, this, this is the recyclable plastic bag that's appropriate, allowed by California law?
So through the mayor, Dean Peterson, Environmental Health Director. I believe your question comes to labeling on plastics that are recyclable?
Not just plastics, but if, if a plastic bag, if a retailer or anybody is going to offer a plastic bag and call it recyclable or compostable or decompostable, these are all things I spent some time look, you know, trying to do some research on. And it seemed to me that the state of California had come up with some definitions, but it was unclear to me, as Mr. Mora pointed out, whether or not any of these laws have been passed. Is there a standing law that says, yes, you can, you can sell or give away this bag in the state of California so long as it meets these AS, and that's another thing you'd refer to about these ASTM standards?
It's my understanding currently in California, if you're going to call something compostable, it, that's where it comes into the ASTM standards. And that's more of a federal requirement. I don't believe, and I may be wrong, I'm not completely familiar on how California is, I don't believe they have a definition of that. It's similar to the definitions for organic, you know, there's, sort of, to call it compostable, it needs to meet that ASTM standard. In order to call any plastic recyclable, it must actually be recyclable. And that, again, I believe is a federal requirement, not necessarily a state requirement. That's my understanding. That's my understanding.
But if there is a federal requirement, it would over-
Correct.
Stand over us?
Correct, correct, yes.
Okay.
In fact, many of the bags you can get at the grocery stores, including even newspaper bags, do have labeling on there indicating they may be recycled, and it's, again, go with that thin film recycling, like Recology is doing.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Mr. Olbert?
Just, thank you. Very briefly, actually, not so much a question, I have one question, but also a comment. For what it's worth, in terms of that last discussion, I know from buying dog waste bags, that they're very clearly marked recyclable, but if you look in the fine print, it says, not in California. So, my presumption from that, my takeaway from that, is that California has some rules that are more specific about what may or may not be considered recyclable, in terms of plastic.
Okay.
The other question I had, is I just wanted staff or Mr. Peterson to comment, if they would, on the, I think you said it was the Rethink Waste program for recycling bags?
Yes. Yes, as I was indicating to Councilmember Grokot, this was started a couple months ago. It was an initiative from the SBWMA staff, and their feeling was that even though the cities were in the process of adopting bag ordinances, while that ramp-up was occurring, it would be a nice service to the community and the public to offer bag recycling at Shoreway Center. And the other motive, obviously, for that is, as we've talked about before, is Rethink Waste has invested a lot of money at the recycling plant at Shoreway Center, and of course, the plastic bags can wrap themselves around the various pieces of equipment, and actually, if you've ever been in there, you'll see that there are several people from VRS that literally are by hand pulling those bags out as they come down the assembly line.
Yeah, I'm sorry, I wasn't, thank you, but I wasn't sufficiently clear on my question. My own reading and research indicates that the, I guess I will call it, the recyclability of these bags is often somewhat limited, at least it's viewed that way in some quarters. And I wasn't sure if that, you know, there's, so I wasn't sure if that was an issue, perhaps, that Rethink Waste was, in fact, looking at it more from the point of view of not jamming up the recyclery, as opposed to actually there being a real pathway for recycling the bags.
Okay, and I guess to that point, and I think we've talked about this in an earlier meeting, there are some concerns about, once you collect these bags, how much of a market is there for them, and indeed, in some cases, there seems to be questions about, people who collect them, are they actually recycled, or do they end up in the landfill anyway? I would imagine, although I haven't gotten into this detail with Rethink Waste, that given their background in this field, they would certainly, to the extent possible, try to assure that these bags they collected were actually recycled.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions?
Hey.
Yes.
We're for the city attorney, I suppose, but I was trying to understand the process. The, normally, when we have a project and we do an EIR, it's here, that we have that. In this case, we were coming under the county's EIR, and I had asked last time if we'd ever had it, the EIR on the dais, and I wanted clarification on this process, because it seems a little disjunct to me, that we're coming under their EIR, but we've never had it before us, and so it's just left to presumption, if we, as council members, read it, and how the, how the public, especially San Carlos residents, and the, you know, people that we answer to, could possibly have interaction with us as a, as a five-member body, to discuss the EIR, validate it, have questions answered, and so forth, and then for us to have made a formal decision on the EIR, because the, as I read our ordinance, it is, of course, depending on and referring back to that, that document.
I think the, the question you're asking is, is sort of a process question, about how, how the city council can adopt an ordinance that might otherwise require environmental review through reference to an environmental document that the county has certified. You can do that under state law, you can, you can adopt a project, if you will, to use the term, in sequo, by reference to another agency's EIR, and the theory is that the other agency has already analyzed all the environmental effects of this, of this ordinance, the county has already identified all the effects, and that kind of is why, in the prior, the prior discussion questions, why it's not possible to really make changes to this ordinance without recirculating the EIR, because in Woodside's case, my understanding is that they did not, the county did not analyze the impact of not charging for bags in their ordinance, and so since that had not been analyzed, that you'd have to recirculate the EIR to address that effect. So the, the way you can, to, the way you can approve this ordinance without being the lead agency on your own and approving the EIR is by reference through the county's analysis. You do, we do have findings in the ordinance that talk about the, the county's environmental review, and that you're finding that that review was, was sufficient, and it's the same procedure, I might add, that all the other cities in the county are adopting this ordinance.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions for staff? Okay, this is a public hearing. Is there anyone from the public wishing to speak on this item? Okay, seeing none, I'll entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to close the public hearing on this item. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Stained? All right. So the items before us, to adopt this ordinance or not? Do I hear a motion?
Mr. Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance number-
1455.
Ordinance of the City of San Carlos, adding Chapter 8.28 to the city, or to the municipal code, reusable bag ordinance.
Sir, a second?
Second.
Okay, it's moved and seconded, and any discussion?
I'll just make a few points. One is simply about process, and I determined that this is probably the best place to mention it. There were things that I was alerted to online with a blog, about comments about our meeting, and talking, and not talking, and so forth, and perhaps, you know, the discussion on that might be for another time, but it's difficult when things are put on a blog, because it freezes us out, in terms of having any discourse. It's, in my mind, it's better to have the discourse here on the dais, where we can have interaction back and forth, than to have things on a blog, where, because of the Brown Act, we're not in a position to really respond. So, that was troubling to me, and I, on the items that were on there, I still hold to my position on, on things that I'm concerned about, charging, and for me, to let the council know, my biggest issue here is not banishing the, the plastic bag. That's why, the reason I asked the question about Woodside, and charging for, and so forth, is because I have deep concerns about telling a retailer, you have to charge for something, and you have to charge this minimum price, because, you know, it can be said, well, we shouldn't be making decisions from the dais about constitutional matters and so forth. I would tend to disagree. We swear to uphold the Constitution of the state of California, and they, and this federal constitution. Now, we can debate and disagree on what that means, or how we see ourselves upholding things. My estimation, I don't see anything in the state constitution, or the federal constitution, that allows the government to tell a merchant, this item, you have to sell it, and you have to sell it for this much. Car insurance aside, because the use of the roadways, it's not a right, number one, and number two, there are things in the state constitution that do cover those kinds of things. And the same could be said, I had asked the question about, what about the, you know, the government coming in and checking out your, your bags, which ones you've sold, which ones you've given away, and so forth, and reconciling your books, and there was comment that, well, the federal government can do that with taxes, and, you know, if you have employees and so forth. Yes, that's true, and that also is covered in the, both the state constitution and in the federal constitution. I don't see anything in the constitution, again, about telling a retailer, this item, you have to sell it, you have to sell it for this minimum price. And I also did some research over the weekend on whether or not that's ever been done, and I could find things about, you know, wage, minimum wage, yes, I could find things about things that were done in the past regarding price fixing during the Nixon administration, during other administrations, and some of those things were actually contested and went to the Supreme Court. So, this, this is a thing that really, really troubles me. I think it's a slippery slope, and I wonder myself, what's the next thing? Does the government get to tell, for instance, you know, a gasoline retailer, you have to sell gas for $10 a gallon, because we're trying to move people out of cars and getting them into mass transit? I don't see where, you know, once the door's open, once the camel's nose is under the tent, I don't see where this necessarily ends. So, that primarily is my concern with this. If we were just looking at eliminating the bag, the plastic bag, and allowing other things to go as they are, I, I could be fine with it, but I don't think we can do that without incurring costs, setting ourselves back on the EIR process.
Okay, thank you. Any further discussion?
Yes, I have some comments.
Yes, go ahead.
Okay. I think the intent of this ordinance is, is great. I would prefer to see some changes in it, but I think, you know, under the situation we have, and being consistent across the county works out, but I would like to ask the county to go back and revisit it in the future, as behaviors of individuals and businesses, and how they reuse bags becomes more of the norm, and look at, is there a need for the record-keeping, is there a need for the charges, and maybe we can evolve to something that is a little bit less burdensome to both individuals and, and the businesses. But I think in the long run, it, it has some, some good benefits for us. Thank you.
Okay. Other comments? Mr. Olbert?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I just wanted to briefly mention that, that I had had, among other things, extensive discussions with various people, including the city attorney, at several points last year, when we were talking about the Styrofoam ban ordinance, and, and the earlier iterations and introductions of the, the single-use bag ban ordinance, which convinced me that I think the, in terms of our ability to enact something like this, I'm quite comfortable that we do have the statutory authority to do it. With all due respect to my colleague, I don't really see the constitutional issues here, but I'm not a judge, and somebody is welcome to test this thing in court, if that's what they wish to do, but I just want to go on record as saying that my research and study indicates that we're perfectly fine in, in enacting this. Thank you.
Thank you. Any other comments? Okay, motion on the floor, and seconded. If there's no further discussion, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
No.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
And Mayor Griselli?
Yes. All right, thank you. Moving on, item 10, new business, 10A, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the plans and specifications for the library and interior remodel project C9787, authorizing advertisement, approving an award of contract amount and construction contingency if within the construction budget, and authorizing the city manager to execute the contract with the lowest possible, excuse me, with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations, and city council, Christine Bolen, the acting Parks and Rec Director. Tonight, we're back for the third time to, ready to go to bid on the library interior renovation project. It's been a while, it's been about a year since we've talked about this project, so we wanted, we're back on track now, and we want to put the thing out to bid. So, before I refresh your memories on the, the project, I really want to say thank you to the crew that's worked on this, the team that's worked on this project. If you can just wave your hand out there in the audience, starting with Anne Marie, not you, Anne Marie DeSpain, our county library director, and Rachel McDonald, Tom Forton, Chet Mawaka, we've had several architects working on the project as well, not here tonight, though. Is Guy Wallace here? Guy? Guy Wallace has been on the team the entire time, and now, we're moving it to our public works team, which is Jay Walter and Merrill Buck. So they're going to see it right to the end, through to completion. Just to refresh your memory, this is our existing layout. Hopefully, it looks somewhat familiar to you now, and I just wanted to run through some subtle changes, which are going to redefine the library and make it much more user-friendly. With the entrance here, we are moving the service point to one service point, with the two self-checks remaining. The children's area will be reestablished and moved, the tables and the stacks will be, will be moved for a more cohesive flow through the children's area. Also, I really forgot to mention, the entire library will be repainted and recarpeted, which is quite exciting, and, and what's really nice about the new carpeting, it will be zoned, so you'll have different color palette of carpeting in the children's area versus the adult area and the teen area. We will be also improving some shelving in, I already said the layout in the children's area. We're reestablishing this teen zone, and we've involved the youth advisory council to discuss what they'd like in there, as far as furniture layout, and also what they want to call it, and they actually voted on it, and they want to call it the Zone. We're also updating the, proposing to update here, the, the technology area, as you know, it kind of, currently, it kind of spills out, here's the existing layout, it kind of spills out into really almost a lobby area, so we're pushing that back, and, and what's great about that is you can actually hold classes in one area, and I believe it'll be much quieter. Let's see, have I forgotten anything? What they're focusing on now is a kind of movable furniture, to have book club discussions and other events, and that type of thing, at the library, so this furniture will be movable and more flexible. We're also talking about, aside from the project itself, really, the city maintenance issues, we'll be upgrading restrooms, there's some lighting involved, integrating the patios, which are kind of unused right now, we will be kind of utilizing those more for kind of an indoor/outdoor, and that's the new layout, without the color. And just to review our funding sources, the city is a partner with the county library, JPA. We will be contributing $400,000. Friends of the Library has come up with a very generous donation of $275,000. Gwen Hofer Estate has donated $257,000. Seminole County Library, again, splitting the, sharing in the cost, $400,000, and, again, city maintenance funds will, aside from the project, just, that will include, I already talked about restroom, but also, if you think about the stairwell, if you ever take the stairs, really needs replacing, elevator, flooring, tenants' hallway, that kind of thing, so that's $60,000. Our total project cost model, if you recall, it's 1.4, so all the design, engineering, moving, I'll talk about the temporary services in a moment, furniture, equipment, construction costs, and our healthy contingency is roughly 1.392. Talking about the, the timeline, we've got, we're ready to go to bid, really, saying tomorrow, of course, I'm not the public works director, but I say tomorrow. Talking about letting the contract in April, opening a temporary library space. Now, if you recall, on the second floor, the emergency, industrial emergency council vacated the space, and it has been empty, and we actually held it open for the temporary library, so that is a perfect, it's a small space, but I think it'll work just to have a presence of a library during construction. Construction would begin roughly mid-June, mid-May to June, and we're looking for a grand reopening in November. That concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer questions, and there's also- And there's also a lot of smart people out in the audience that can also answer questions. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bowlen. Questions? Yes, Ms. Clapper.
The plans that are going out for bid, will that include replacing the front doors or replacing the gates with actual doors that will operate, like the front doors to the building? What?
No, I think we originally had that in the plans, and when we started slashing the budget and...
So do we have any idea what the additional cost is to replace those doors?
So we had that originally, and we kind of redlined it out.
Okay. Well, I know there were several things, since I was involved on the task force, I know there were several things that were redlined. And my concern is that during the discussion that we had about the different things that could possibly be redlined out, when we talked about the doors, we said this would be a prime opportunity during this construction phase to be able to replace those doors. And I would be, would like to find out how we could take a look at that as an option if we were able to raise the additional funds from the community, maybe with, if the Friends was willing to do a matching grant or something like that. Is there some way that we can possibly include that in the project? Because it seems like it had some significant benefits to the project, to the, not to the project, but to the facility, long run.
I was just going to say change order, but I had to look over to the expert, and he mentioned change order. So that could be, that is an option as we go forward.
Okay. Because one of the things that we haven't done is go out to the community and do fundraising, which many of the other libraries have to do in a situation like this. We've been very fortunate to be able to basically say, gee, we have all of this up front. And so I think if there's something that would offer that much benefit to the facility long-term, that this would be a good time for us to take a look at it. And I don't recall anything else that was as important as that particular piece.
No, I don't.
Was there anything else that you recall that we might want to try to raise additional funds for?
Well, we had, we do have the list that we slashed from.
Okay.
We can take another look at that as we go forward. But the front doors were probably the key item.
That seemed like something that we all agreed as a group would really add value to that facility. So if that would be possible to do, that I would like to see that happen. Thank you.
Thank you.
Hey, other questions? Yes, Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And by the way, Ms. Bowlen, congratulations on your temporary interim appointment.
So much.
I understand you're working on improving your backhand in your new position.
Free throw.
Yes, your free throw. There you go. The question I had really has to do with the, you touched on it just briefly, I think, in answering Ms. Clapper's question. In terms of the scaling back that was done, the value engineering that was done to fit within the budget, can you, can you give us sort of a summary of what was done there in order to make it work?
Can I have the library answer that question for me? I don't know that we scaled back as much as we revised the cost estimates.
Okay.
We also, just so you know, we had a $300 mathematical typo there, which we...
Saw that, yeah.
Yeah. And we had a lighting grant that actually expired, so we had to adjust the contingency by that number, but...
At one point, didn't we have a $2 million price tag on what we had conceptually put together?
That's what the staff...
I recall, yes.
Good evening, Mayor Grisilli, members of the city council. I'm Anne Marie DeSpain. I'm the library director for Samhail County. And we did, I'm trying to think just of the timeframe, but we did go through a process, the project team, of reengineering. I think the most significant reduction was to furniture, and I think we reduced that by about 50%. So we're looking at reusing a lot of the furniture. It's a little less flexible, but we felt like that's something that we can continue to work, and the Friends can work with us to replace some of that. So the front door, we had an enhancement to collections, and that was reduced for library material. We figured that that's another area that we can continue to grow, and the library system is working on transitioning from print to digital, so that'll happen over time. There was a, in the teen area that Christine talked about, that room, we had a glass wall, and that, the doors were actually removed, so it's a little bit more of an open area. And we thought that that could work because that will be a very flexible room. So that was an area. Trying to think if there were other really significant, I'd be happy to provide you with the entire list, but it really was a process of line by line, we went through and said, yes, no, yes, no, oh, reduce that a little bit.
And thank you, actually. That's sufficient for my question. And just to be clear, that kind of value engineering happens in every project, and I'm very glad that the team actually did that. I always like to test it to hear what it is. And in fact, in that regard, the one sort of remaining question I have on that, I'm not sure if this is best answered by you or by Ms. Bowlen or someone else, but we effectively at this point have just shy of a 14% contingency in the project, if I did the math correctly. And so my question is, is that a reasonable number for this stage of where we are in the bidding and contracting process?
Usually about 10%. Good evening, Mayor and council members. Jay Walter, public works director. And yes, to address your question directly, it is an appropriate amount at this point in the project. Typically, you'll use a larger contingency during the design phase to kind of help you account for things that you might not have thought of, but you want to make sure the project has. When you get back through and you do a value engineering, you're getting down to a pretty tight estimate. And so you really don't ever want to enter construction with anything less than about a 10%. So I think we're in really good shape with this contingency going forward.
Because we're north of 10?
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Mr. Grocott?
So I just had a thought that occurred when Ms. Clapper was asking her questions, and not to redesign this whole thing or anything like that, but even in your presentation, you mentioned about the doors at the, whatever, end of the building that is, where the teen center is and the north of the children's area and the periodicals. And there's doors, of course, in each of those cases going out to these courtyards. And it just occurred to me that at some point, maybe as you're looking at the entry doors and so forth, doors that collapse onto each other and really open that space up would offer a lot more flexibility to the courtyards, sort of an indoor/outdoor. And one of the things I've always imagined happening at some point at the library is, you know, like a fundraising event or a community event where people are perhaps using the courtyards to, you know, do some, you know, light dining or heavy hors d'oeuvres, that kind of thing. And, you know, having that kind of event or other kinds of events where you want to do a little bit more of an indoor/outdoor venue, doors like that would open that up to that.
I believe we had those on our original wish list.
Oh, did you?
Which we slashed, yes. Because they were expensive, so...
Okay. Maybe as a future item, like we do with the council agenda, right, the retreat items, right? Yeah. And my only other question is, where's the mayor's office? I didn't see that.
Where's the mayor's office?
Yeah, I didn't see that in the plan.
I already gave you one.
Oh.
In the berm, yeah. All right. Any other questions, Mr. Bowlen? Okay.
Thank you.
So, thank you, Ms. Bowlen. Thank you, everybody. I'd like to entertain a motion on this item, please.
Mr. Mayor, I'd be pleased to introduce resolution number 2013 dash...
I think it's, is it adopted or introduced tonight?
It's adopted.
Approve, yeah, approve.
Approve.
Approve the resolution 21.
Dash 21, to approve the plans and specifications for the library interior remodel project C9787, authorize advertisement, approve an award of a contract amount and construction contingency if within the construction budget, and authorize the city manager to execute a contract with the lowest responsive and responsible bidder.
Second.
All right, it's moved and seconded to adopt, pardon me, to approve and adopt this resolution. Further discussion? Hearing none, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
All right, thank you. Moving on, item 10B, under new business, consideration of authorizing the mayor to sign a comment letter relative to Caltrain electrification-dash EIR scoping process. Mr. Mora?
Thank you, Mayor. Dial up our presentation. Okay, we're here to talk to you tonight about the Caltrain electrification project and the city's proposed comments on the EIR scoping. As you may know, and as you can see in this chart, there basically are three modernization projects that are occurring over the next couple of decades in the Caltrain corridor that Caltrain is advocating for. The first is some advanced signaling, which is commonly referred to as CBOS, and that project is exempt from CEQA. So that was cleared a couple of years ago. And actually, construction on CBOS starts this September, and it is planned to be in service by 2015 or two years from today. And that is sort of the first ingredient, as it were, in, for electrified service. The second project, which is what we're here to talk about tonight, is the corridor electrification project. The first step in this process is to go through an environmental impact report, as we talked about earlier. Caltrain will be the lead agency, and in a minute, I'll show you the timeline on that process. And then there will be a second environmental process at the federal level, because this is also co-funded with federal money, so it's subject to NEPA requirements as well. And the planned service date for this project is estimated to be the year 2019 or six years from today. And then the final one of these three projects, which is perhaps the one we hear about most, is the so-called blended service proposal. This was the proposal from three elected officials, former Senator Semidion, Assembly Member Gordon, and Congress Member Eschew. And this particular project is planned to be in service in the year 2026 to 2029, depending on funds. Funds are not at this point available for this particular project as it relates to the San Jose to San Francisco corridor. And the lead agencies, if and when this project is funded, would be High-Speed Rail and the Federal Rail Authority. So here's a look at the timeline and EIR process for electrification, the second of the three projects. The public scoping notice went out on January 31st. There have been four hearings and workshops that have been held. The first was in San Carlos at the Caltrain headquarters in late February. The comments are due on March 18th, which explains in part why we are here in front of you tonight. There will be a draft EIR in the fall or winter of 2013, to be followed by a final EIR in the spring or summer of 2014, and then project design in the summer or fall of that year. As you can see on the little graphic on the right, the rough timing is one to two years for the EIR and design, three to four years for construction, and one to two years for what is called commissioning and testing. High-level look at the features of the project, the benefits, as it were. Caltrain will be able to move from five to six trains per hour at peak. They will continue to run the trains at 79 miles per hour. It will use the existing two tracks, Caltrain system, and it will use the so-called automated CBOS equipment that is being constructed starting this year. The system also adds a series of power stations and switching stations. There are two power stations, which are rather large in size. There are seven switching stations, a little bit smaller in size. These are technically outside the right-of-way, and so they may have some impact in some communities. The good news for San Carlos is, in the current design, none of those facilities are within the boundaries of San Carlos. The project design also uses overhead contact systems, so-called OCS. This involves poles that are 30 to 40 feet tall on either side of the existing railway, as well as a mesh of wires and contact points. Some of the benefits that are projected for this project are reduced noise and vibration compared to today's steel-to-seal diesel system, increased revenue and reduced costs for Caltrain, improved air quality and reduced emissions in the environment, and it also prepares the corridor for future high-speed rail if funding is available. Here's a drawing that shows, or a map that shows the route. The colored yellow bubbles are the paralleling stations, which are every five miles. The dots in red are the so-called power stations. You need one of those every 36 miles. And again, as I indicated earlier, one of the concerns there is that if there is right-of-way needed for this project, it will be to accommodate those nine stations. And as I noted earlier, there are no stations at this point in San Carlos for either power or parallel. I also had a question on Friday from Councilmember Olbert about why was the overhead system used versus something else like, say, a third rail that you'd see in BART? And looking back at the 2009 environmental document that was prepared for this project, some of the things that are cited, and I talked actually today with Caltrain staff to confirm that these are still the case, are things such as cost. In a third rail system, because of the voltage, exposed voltage, it is recommended to put in grade crossings. As you may recall, while San Carlos, Belmont, and Brisbane have all their grade crossings in place, most of the other cities on the corridor do not. It would be necessary to construct, under normal conditions of a third rail system, 40 grade crossings, each of which cost about $100 million each. So that would be a rather significant project cost. There's also issues with the number of power stations. Because a third rail system is, has lower power than the overhead system, which has higher power, you need a power or parallel station every mile versus every five miles. So that would have an impact, again, on cost, but it would also have an impact on right-of-way. More properties would be impacted. It's also the case that in the current design of high-speed rail for the state, they are not compatible with a third rail system. So that, right there, kind of knocks it out. And finally, third rail systems, from what I have read, are limited to 75 to 80 miles an hour, which makes them rather iffy for Caltrain operations, since Caltrain is already operating at 79 miles an hour, which is at the upper edge of that system. This is an area that Caltrain staff does plan to illuminate on in the EIR, and I guess to anticipate a question, if this is something you want to add to the mayor's letter, it would be something that certainly would be relevant. Here's some drawings of the artist rendering of the system. This is the overhead contact system in a main line somewhere to San Carlos. You can see that there are poles on either side, there are wires above. This is an artist rendering of the so-called cantilever at the station. Again, you see the poles and the wires over each of the set of tracks at a station. This drawing I put in primarily just so you can see what it might look like down the road if high-speed rail and blended operations ever came, and there was a need at some stations for passing tracks. You'll see that the pole heights are relatively the same, but overhead, you have a bit more in the way of wires and connections, because you have to have two wires, contact wires close together on either side, because you basically have a two-and-two configuration. The comment letter, just some highlights, and this is in your staff report. These are the areas that staff is recommending that the council ask for amplification or more detail on in the EIR, more detail on the amount of reduced noise and vibration, the service level improvements, the improvements projected in air quality and emission reduction, the appearance of the poles and wires, and if there's ways to minimize the impact. There's also an issue with existing trees and landscaping. There has to be a 10-foot minimum clearance between trees and landscaping and these overhead contact systems, which may impact some landscaping existing in the community, in not only San Carlos, but others. Also, number six, which is something that I've actually spent some time with both Caltrain staff and their property division as it relates to the transit village, we need to be very careful in this arena that while we're talking on the one project about adding landscaping to screen the transit village, we also have to be recognizing the fact that once electrification goes in, we still are dealing with that 10-foot setback. So that's going to be an interesting interplay. And then finally, a discussion of right-of-way impacts, although at this point, it appears that through San Carlos, we really don't see much of any right-of-way impact, because we don't have any of the powering stations. And then I'm also suggesting in the letter that we talk a little bit about blended operations. Now, blended operations is not part of this EIR directly. However, because it is a foreseeable project in the future, it is discussed in the cumulative condition. And based on comments that we've had at the staff level and also comments that I've heard from some San Carlos residents, both in the past and at the workshop recently, I'm suggesting these four items, namely, how would the contact system be expanded for those communities that end up with passing tracks? When might the passing track decision be made? The height of facilities with passing tracks? In other words, if you are in a community where passing tracks are added, you're going to have to raise the bridge height. And then, of course, you're going to have the OCS poles and facilities on top of that. So that needs to be detailed. And then again, a discussion of right-of-way impacts. So with that, I'd be happy to answer any questions from the council. And then I would encourage you during your discussion to let staff know and give direction if there's additional areas you'd like to add to the letter or things you'd like to tweak.
Okay, questions, Mr. Mora? Mr. Grocott?
You mentioned about the equipment not being within the bounds of San Carlos.
Correct.
Can you go more into that, what is meant by... Can you go more into that, what is meant by that?
Absolutely. The way the project works is that, for most of the project, they're strictly using the two existing tracks, and they're putting up the frames and the wires alongside them on either side. And that's the situation in San Carlos. However, in nine locations along that route from San Francisco to just south of San Jose, they're going to be adding two power stations and seven paralleling stations. And these are basically going to sit on one side or the other of the two existing tracks. So to the extent that the property that's needed for these power and switching stations, the land is not currently owned by Caltrain, they may have to acquire property. And so that was my point, that there could be some right-of-way impacts of this project. Just so everybody knows, as I'm sure most of you know, in most of the discussions from Caltrain about this project, they say, "We're using the existing route." And I would say to you, that's mostly true. However, you know, asterisk, to the extent these power stations need to be added, and to the extent that there isn't room next to the current tracks within the existing right-of-way, some property may need to be required for this project.
So when we talked about the blended system and the passing tracks, we had a discussion up here about probability of San Carlos being picked for a passing track. Might there be a probability, after negotiations go on with other cities, cities that don't have the room in their right-of-way for these facilities, that it might get? It's not in San Carlos now, according to the design, but it could be pushed into San Carlos. And then my question to follow with that, if there's potential for that, perhaps we should address that in our letter, saying, you know, "We want to know more about these things," if they may end up in San Carlos?
I think, given the design of the route, it's not likely that that would occur. But, you know, since we don't have the plans and specs, I'm not going to stand here and tell you that it absolutely won't occur. That's why I want to highlight it for the council. So Councilmember Grokot is, I think you're correct. That is something we could add if you'd like, yes.
Okay, so we could discuss that later, if you want to add that or not. Funding source, just, you know, quickly, the article that came out recently about the board meeting that happened in Southern California, and surprisingly, one of the members voted no. And it had to do with Prop 1A monies being spent on
Right.
other things. That may be a question, but that's not a question for this kind of document.
That's correct. And just to comment on your point, Councilmember Grokot, having attended some of the high-speed rail meetings, this is a consistent point for Commissioner Schenk. She lives in the Orange County area, and part of her vision is that she would, you know, at the risk of putting words in her mouth, I think it's fair to say that she would prefer to see the funding that might go to the peninsula for blended operations go to the leg from Los Angeles to San Diego, which is where she's from. And so, and she's been, this isn't the first time, as I said, that she's brought this up at a meeting. And indeed, the last time I was at a California High Speed Rail Board meeting in San Francisco, she brought up the very same point and voted against another motion, so that in mind. So I think, even though the news report said everyone was surprised, and perhaps that's true, I wasn't particularly surprised. That's very consistent position on her part.
And then my last question has to do with item four at the top of page two regarding appearance of overhead contact systems. I've never experienced one of these systems, been next to one, and, you know, seen it. I've only seen, in the city, the bus systems with the overheads. In fact, I lived in an apartment one time, believe it or not, in the city. Worst period of my life, I tell you. Right outside my bedroom window, these buses going by. And it's not just the noise of the buses, but when the contacts break contact and re-contact, you get this, yes. And so is there any concern with these systems to that kind of noise? I can just imagine, you know, living on Old County Road and listening to, "Can you do that again?" That kind of noise, you know, all night long. Because especially in the evening hours, when all the other ambient noise goes away, that kind of thing can be very annoying.
Right. Well, and we talk about in the draft letter noise very generically, but again, I think if the council wants to specifically call out that kind of noise and add a question, I think that would be fine.
Is it an issue? Do you have any experience?
I haven't heard anyone raise the issue yet. Most of the comments that I've heard, both from the experts and the public, relate more to the question that Councilmember Olbert asked me on Friday, which was, have they looked at third-rail systems? And if you do that, of course, you eliminate the visual impact of the 30- to 40-foot poles and the wires. The trade-off is, then you have more of these paralleling stations and more property impacts. But no, nobody has yet talked to me about that noise. But again, the whole purpose of this scoping letter is for us to call attention to things we'd like to hear more about. So I think, again, that would be a very relevant thing to add if that, the council has an
And if I may, just one thing that you just talked about there, also, if passing tracks were to be in San Carlos, especially where a transition is happening, it would seem to me, as a train is moving out of the way for high-speed rail to go by, that transition might also have some noise associated with it. I don't know.
Could be, could be.
So we may want to add something about that. Okay, thank you.
Other questions? Mr. Collins, I'm just trying to go back and forth here.
You're the mayor.
Yeah.
Just to follow up to Mr. Grokot's question, though, about the noise, but these trains are supposed to be much quieter, right?
They are quieter. I haven't seen a number, and frankly, that's one of the reasons that in your draft, I put that in there. I've heard a lot of talk about they're quieter, and obviously, the council and the planning commission have had a number of meetings about Transit Village and 1DB. My sense is that in the discussions with Caltrain staff about much quieter, I think we're talking more, at least a few DB, but I've never seen a number. So I think clearly, we want them, or at least I would recommend to you that you want to have a number. And the same is true with this discussion of significantly lower vibration noise. Again, there's no, I haven't seen any quantification. I think that would be important.
Okay. Just a couple of questions. You mentioned power stations, and they're 36 miles apart. Isn't this, what, a 50-something mile?
Correct. That's why
How does that work?
It's a good question. And as you see by the two, I guess in this slide, it looks like purple dots, that's the reason there's only two of them on there, because
I can't see the purple dots, I'm sorry.
I don't have a laser pointer, but basically
There's purple dots.
I'll take your word for it.
Here's one. Where's the other one?
All right, so there's spread out through the system. All right. And then the other question I had was, what exactly are parallel stations?
My understanding, admittedly limited of paralleling stations, is it's sort of along the lines of a repeater, repeating the power, is my understanding of it. And those are the little, you see these yellow dots, all those yellow dots every four miles, those are the stations. And as this map would show you, there appears to be a paralleling station south of Redwood City, and then there's another one that is in the Mountain View area, and another one that is south of Santa Clara. So if you take the route from San Jose to just south of, or from San Francisco to just south of San Jose, and you lay it out as they have done, that's kind of where those stations fall. And that's the reason I said earlier, it's probably not likely they're going to move, because they're a function of how many miles, as you suggest, the route is.
What do they look like? Are they like buildings, or are they boxes, or?
Basically, I would say they look sort of, the two big ones, the power stations, look like a small PG&E yard, I would suggest. And the paralleling stations are a little less intense, but again, they have sort of a series of transformers and things. But they tend to be either on one side or the other of the tracks. So the key, I think, for all of these locations is going to be, does Caltrain have enough right-of-way to accommodate them, or are they going to need to acquire property? And that was one of the reasons that, early on in this process, you know, the first thing I looked at was, are any of these in San Carlos? And good news is, they're not. So one less thing to worry about.
All right, thank you.
Mr. Olbert?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Thank you, Mr. Moore, for your presentation, and thank you for researching that third-rail I guess the main thing that I'm curious about here, sort of relates to that, I did some more thinking about it over the weekend, whether it's specifically a third-rail option or not, if it was possible for us to suggest, I would very much like to see the EIR consider whatever other alternative is less aesthetically impacting than the catenaries. And I would deliberately try and phrase it some way like that, not to say, "Well, we want you to study a third rail," because to me, that's what I thought of, but that's a technical engineering issue. The real issue for me that I'm concerned about is, if I understand what the staff report says, for a variety of reasons, we may end up raising the height of the tracks, ultimately, if there are passing tracks that come through San Carlos. And then we're going to have another 10 or 12 feet on top of that.
Actually, it's more like 30 or 40 feet on top of it.
Oh, even better. Well, see, I was jokingly going to say, perhaps we could, you know, put zeppelin stations up on the top, you know, as open a dirigible service, but I thought that was going to be a joke, but actually, it might actually be practical. I'm just concerned about what that's going to look like, you know, marching down the center of town, kind of. Do we, is that the kind of feedback that we can give? In other words, don't say, "We want you to study a third-rail alternative," but say, "We want you to find and study whatever the next best alternative is."
Or a mitigating project.
Yeah, a mitigating project, that's right.
Yes, a couple of things in your questions. First of all, in our comment letter, actually going back to 2010, we talked about this. At that time, there was a guy named Bob Doty, who was in charge of this project, and he talked about, in I believe it was Germany, that their high-speed rail system, they had painted the wires, if I understand this, and had placed them at a certain angle that made them hard to see. He described it as an almost optical illusion. I still can't quite picture how that works. But in our letter, we said, "If there are techniques, along your lines that Councilmember Olbert raises, of hiding or making the wires less obvious," obviously, we'd like to see that. On the question of, is the alternative to OCS a third rail or not, that actually was a discussion I had, in fact, this morning with Caltrain staff, because when I read the 2009 draft EIR, which is the last time they studied this in detail, that was the only alternative they looked at. And off the cuff, they were not able to come up with something, another option beyond those two. But they're intending to look at that. But again, that would be a very relevant thing for us to add to our letter, yes.
Yeah, I would like to see something more generic, not as specific, you know, included in there. My other questions are probably more comments that I don't know if they go in this letter or they go in some other communication, but I'm going to bring them up here in case they could fit in in the letter. I understand the process that they're following about segregating this effort into multiple environmental impact reports. There's a significant perceptual and therefore political risk associated with doing that, which is that it will encourage the belief on the part of people in many communities that, you know, it's kind of at no point that my hands leave the end of my arms as I'm moving all these pieces around, okay? That says to me that Caltrain really needs to be doing a lot of outreach and communication with interested parties, just to make sure that they understand what's going on, okay? And I will just say, you know, my observation, anecdotally, I think they've been getting better at that recently, but I think there was an extended period of time when they didn't do as good a job on outreach as they should have. And I think that hurt the perception there. So it's not strictly speaking an environmental impact report issue, but it sort of relates to how you manage the process.
Right. And I guess what I would say in response to that comment, Councilmember Olbert, is, we kind of tried to address that at your last meeting, when we commented on the JPA amendment. And the reason for that is that you're correct, that when high-speed rail was leading the public outreach, it was lacking, let's say. And it was an area that, for good or for bad, they didn't put a lot of money into. They put a lot of money into the engineering portion of that project, and not much into public outreach. And some of us were beating on their door, saying, "You've got it backwards," in my opinion. The thing that has happened since Caltrain has taken the lead, since we've started to talk about electrification more and to talk about blended systems, is it is a significant change. Caltrain is in the lead, not high-speed rail, and I think, not surprisingly, with people like Mike Scanlon and Mark Simon and Marion Lee in the lead, they're much more sensitive to these things, and they're doing a much better job. And in fact, the letter that we sent last time, and also it relates to this three-phase approach, is that a lot of the agencies now have said, "We're glad to see that you, Caltrain, are in the lead on electrification, and we're trying to figure out how much of a role we can get you to play in the blended system." Now, the tricky part in the third phase of all of this is, this gets into the famous expression, you know, "He who pays the piper calls the tune." The reason that in Phase Three, high-speed rail and the Federal Rail Administration are the lead agencies for CEQA and not Caltrain, is because they're the folks providing the money. So what we've put in the JP-B, JPA, that we talked to you about last time, and some of the language that we had in that letter, talked about things such as, "We hope that Caltrain will continue to have a leading role," and things like that. And what we've said at the staff level to them is, "We recognize that legally, you aren't the responsible agency for blended systems, and you can't be, because it's not your money. However, you could, to the extent, you could continue to work with high-speed rail as you are today, we'd like to see you do as much of that working together as possible." And that's kind of how we're trying to address the desire to have more outreach and have more local discussion. They seem to be pretty good at it. High-speed rail, not so much.
And I think that's a good way of looking at it. Again, I would more broadly characterize my perspective as saying, whoever does it has to do a better job than, at times, has been done in the recent past. And, you know, I don't care whether they outsource it, bring somebody who's an expert to learn how to do it themselves, but, because that's a very real risk, I think, with a multiple, the multiple, which we even saw it on the Transit Village, EIR, I mean, in terms of the perception some people have there. Last question I had is, do we have any more insight into how they plan on incorporating the reasonable, foreseeable nature of HSR in their analysis? Because that's, from my education, that Mr. Rubens and others had given me during the Transit Village issue, that's an important but kind of squishy concept.
Yeah, I think in the discussions that we've had, and also, Mr. Collins has been on the elected committee, so he's heard some of this as well, I think they're trying to figure out a way to both recognize that that's a foreseeable project and to talk about it, but also to make clear that it is not the plan or intent of this EIR, the one for electrification, to clear the passing tracks or to make the decision about passing tracks. That their intent is to save that, if that's the right term, or to park that, until we get to blended systems. Now, as you saw in the draft letter, and I think it's fair to do, because there are issues that relate to both aspects of that project, it makes some sense for us, I think, as a city, to begin to talk about blended systems, even though at this point, it's only a foreseeable project in the cumulative case. It's still something we can talk about, and to the extent that certain decisions that are made here about the environmental document and the plan design may bleed into the other, it makes sense to bring them up.
What I'm, the reason I raise the issue, what I'm concerned about, and I'd love to see if anybody else in the dais is concerned about it, is, there is the potential in these kind of systems that each step along the way, you reset the baseline, okay? And so you arbitrage between the lack of certainty about something that's only reasonably foreseeable, and say, "Well, we can't sort of deal with all of that, so we'll, you know, make our decisions," not looking to that as being a certainty. And then we reset the bar and make it easier to sort of force a particular solution at the next level. And I'm just concerned that, to me, certainly, the money has not been found, as far as I understand it, to fund all of high-speed rail.
That's correct.
But to me, this is still a pretty foreseeable, it's even more than just reasonably foreseeable. I mean, there's a lot of political clout and effort moving behind, trying to get this thing, get this thing done. So I just hope that the EIR process for this phase will treat it as a fairly likely kind of reasonably foreseeable, if that makes sense.
I hear the point you're making, and again, I guess all I would say is, depending on who you talk to, it's more or less foreseeable, you know. I think that if you talk to high-speed rail and the Caltrain folks, they're very optimistic. I think if you talk to some of the project opponents, or even some of us on staff, I think we're a little more skeptical. But again, I think, as I would rate these projects, clearly, CBOS is fully funded, it's environmentally cleared, and it'll start happening in September. Electrification is now fully funded, it seems likely it will occur. As for the third one?
Well, let me try and cut the chase here. I mean, rather than us going back and forth on this, is that the type of guidance that we could potentially include in this letter? That we would expect that the EIR process for this phase will consider it fairly likely that HSR will be approved? Or is that not something that we can provide in the way of feedback?
I suppose we could opine that, as San Carlos believes it's highly likely. My suspicion is other cities might opine differently, but we could say that.
Okay. Other questions?
Bob, I have one as a follow-up.
One more.
The question I asked about, just so that when we discuss it.
Sure.
The question I was asking about the equipment, and is there any chance it could be in San Carlos? Might we want to bring that up, that we want to know more detail about the? about the noise implications?
I...
The thought occurred to me that, and especially as you were talking to Mr. Collins, and showing, you know, that we're dealing with electricity, so they, they want these things at certain locations because of how electricity flows. And if, the thought occurred to me that if we bring it up as a possibility, that we're concerned about it happening in San Carlos, do we sort of potentially open the door, getting them looking at us? And I don't want that to happen. Do you understand what I'm saying?
I, I understand what you're saying, Councilmember Grokot. I'm, I'm not sure that it would open the door. Again, my, the meetings I've had with them on this particular topic is, it's pretty clear that this, in fact, this is actually the layout they had in 2009, when they did the last EIR four years ago. It hasn't changed significantly. And it does seem to be, to Councilmember Collins's point, a function of the length of the, of the route, and how many miles you need to do. But again, I think if there's concern or nervousness on the part of the council about this area, I think it's fair game to bring it up. I think, in the long run, the bigger exposure that San Carlos has, as we've talked about before, is not in this area, it is when we get to Stage Three, if the money shows up, and whether or not we get the passing tracks.
Yeah.
That's the part, if I were in your shoes, I'd be worried about, not this.
Okay.
Okay, so we've had some ideas thrown out there, and I, I personally think that the ideas are excellent. There's three or four items, a couple, three items you brought up, you brought up. I think we ought to, we ought to discuss that, and as far as I'm concerned, we can just add them to the letter.
I agree, I was just going to say, I kept notes on, I identified four, maybe five.
Did some, did staff keep notes on what we were talking about?
I'm sure Mr. Moore did.
We can always use the tape.
Some notes, and if not, it's always the video.
We also typically review the video when we're making this type of detailed change.
Is there any, anyone here that, huge disagreement with some of the comments made over here?
No, I'm in complete agreement with all the suggested changes.
I think we should bring up all those items that you, and add them to the letter.
The last one that I asked him about, do you think we should bring that up?
I think we should, yeah. I mean, you can put it in there. If, as long as Mr. Moore feels it's a good idea, I mean, I...
I, I think it's a relevant idea, yeah. I, Mr. Grokot, I assure your sensitivity to bringing us attention, perhaps on duty, but on the other hand, I think we're sort of a big target anyway, so...
Okay, so we've, we've made some changes to the letter, and we'll authorize myself to get it, I guess, written up in the next couple of days, and
Yes.
if you can find me to sign it, then we'll, we'll be good.
Yes, I, I would suggest that when you make the motion to authorize the mayor, we do it similar to the one we did last meeting, where you authorize staff to work with the mayor on the changes. That way, we'll have him review it before it goes out the door and he signs it.
Okay, is there a motion on the floor?
So moved.
So moved, is there a second?
Second.
Okay, all those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed? Staying? All right. Thank you, Mr. Moore.
Thank you.
Thank you, folks, for coming up with some ideas. 10C, as the crowd gets thinner and thinner. By the way, there are no prizes for the last person, just to let you know, Mr. Kreche. Just in case you were thinking there's something at the end. 10C, consideration of a resolution adopting the City of San Carlos strategic plan. Oh, Mr., where's, where's Rebecca?
Right there.
Oh, you're going to do this?
I'd gladly turn it over.
No, no, I'm just curious. I thought there was, I, I thought somebody else got a new job again. I...
Most of the items are...
He's the new guy, so he gets all this stuff.
Yeah, he goes to the rookie department head.
Okay.
Roby.
I almost lucked out in that, had a new Parks and Rec director been selected, then I would have skipped, but I'm glad to do my time.
Senior, you should have delegated it to the acting one, but anyway, go ahead.
Anyway, Mayor and Councilmembers, Jay Walter, Public Works Director, to kind of briefly go through the update to the strategic plan. And as a result of the February 26, 2013 Council, Department Head, City Manager, and City Attorney Retreat, as well as, we had a Commissioner in our midst, and our City Treasurer as well, so we had a lot of, a lot of great minds in the room, met for the 15th time to talk about the city's strategic issues and goals. And again, reviewing the mission statement, vision statement, and core values, updating the three-year strategic goals, and develop six-month objectives. Now, can anyone remember how many accomplishments we had in the last six months?
Sixty-eight.
Something, sixty-five or sixty-eight.
I thought it was over a million.
Sixty-one accomplishments.
I liked your number, too.
So, very good memory. But if you remember that, so that's a, that's a pretty good achievement over the last six months, as we thought about all the various great things that we've been doing as a city organization. So again, our vision statement, a great vision statement for 2017, City of San Carlos will be a vibrant, family and business-friendly community admired as a great place to live, learn, work, and play. No change there, what a great vision. The mission statement didn't change either, and again, we're looking at the six-month goals that we would be kind of changing and adjusting as we, as we get ready for this next period of time. The core values, we reaffirmed our core values, City of San Carlos values, as stated on the screen. Community involvement, a big one, again, as we, we know from many of the projects that we do. Public safety, customer service, high ethical standards, just to name a few. The three-year goals, one of those that changed, which I thought was a pretty significant one, is the one at the top of the screen. Attract and develop a quality team. And there are a number of objectives, which I'll get to in just a minute, but that was, that was the one key, or one three-year goal that changed. There was a couple of adjustments made in the wording to the others, but largely they remained the same intent. So, as we go forward, looking at our six-month strategic objectives. Attract and develop a quality team. There were training needs that were identified, and across the city organizations, we have a number of new employees, and that's something that our, will be working on by May, to come up with those training needs. And then, there was an, an objective that was identified for team apparel concept for city employees, council members, and commissioners. Some identity, and some branding, another, another idea for developing and attracting a quality team. And updating the employee, employee wellness program, which is something, as you want to attract and keep employees, employee wellness and those things are extremely important. A big one, and the person who may take over this job in six months from now is to recruit and hire Parks and Recreation Director. We'll see. Conduct an employee satisfaction survey, another good means of kind of gauging the pulse of your employees. What are the things that they're happy about? What are the things that they're concerned with? Always a good tool to have. And, beginning to implement a commissioner orientation process. So, all those things to, to attract and develop a quality team. A holdover goal, provide effective and sustainable public safety. And these, there's a couple of them that will, will come forward very quickly, presenting a full-service fire and emergency contract with Redwood City. That's going to be something that'll happen here in just the next couple of months. And then implementing the terms of that emergency contract, should the council approve it. And, as was talked about tonight, establishing a sheriff's volunteer in policing program in San Carlos. Great use of, of folks with law enforcement experience previously, and helping them to kind of spread and stretch their resources as best they can. Taking a look at the city's current disaster plan, always good to be prepared, and holding an emergency operations center tabletop exercise. These are the things which you, you don't know how you work together until you actually work together, so short of an actual emergency, something really good to do with staff. And, developing a plan for coordinated response for active intruder scenarios. Public safety will be busy in the next, next six months. Implementing facility and infrastructure sustainability, things that are near and dear to me and my department. We will be looking at storm drainage improvements in the industrial road area. We'll have, we'll have a consultant take a look at that and come up with some recommendations. We'll be looking at a, looking to council for direction on a plan and timeline for determining improvements to Holly Street, the corridor, which has kind of long been, people have wondered, you know, what's really happening with this corridor? What can we do here? We'll really try to zero in on that. Then we'll be looking at a, having the council consider a plan for first-floor city hall and city council chamber improvements, public accessibility and other things. As you can, you can kind of tell, the, the first-floor area is looking a little bit tired, and the council chambers as well, so we'll, we'll work on that. And then also, was just described, a comment letter on Caltrain electrification EIR, and we'll be looking on, looking at fire station consolidation in the future. Enhance economic development is another holdover goal, and some very ambitious activities there. The development and disposition agreement for Wheeler Plaza, and some direction from the council on using the strategic property acquisition reserve. Holding the business showcase event for the building and construction industry has been, it's been highlighted before, and you've been given a hint for. And, holding a joint meeting between the Economic Development Advisory Committee and City Council to brainstorm ideas for the economic development plan update. Also, looking at the, the entitlement process and fiscal impact analysis for the San Carlos Transit Village. That will make its way back to you. Also, looking at the downtown parking, and the, the subcommittee getting an opportunity to look at the parking data that has been gathered by the consultant, and ultimately coming back to council with recommendations. And then to update the general plan housing element. So, planning for and implementing financial sustainability, something that, again, a holdover goal, that continues to be very important. Looking forward to some action on the lease for the Branston Electronic Billboard Resolution there. Coming to the council with the user fee cost allocation study, which is in process right now, and study session regarding solid weights and, solid waste rates, excuse me, and potential discounts in that area. Also, something that will be coming to you here very shortly, consideration of sewer rate increases, which will help fund improvements at the SBSA facility, as well as within the city. Will, the Administrative Services Division will ensure completion of an internal control audit. Always good to have sound financial controls. And, we'll be getting the, the council's direction for long-term integrated financial planning. So, those were the goals that we went through and decided on for the next six months, and we'll be, staff will be working diligently on those and coming back to you, and we'll be giving you an update each month on the progress that we're making. And we hope to have more than 61 accomplishments when we come back together after six months at our next retreat.
Thank you, Mr. Walter, very much for your report. We, of course, lived through that, all those things, and, but it's good that the citizens know what we're doing, and what our strategic plan is for the next six months. So, we need a, a motion to approve this plan, so do I hear a, a motion to approve?
We need to do anything more than say so moved?
I'd start, I'll hear, I'd love to hear a motion first, and then we can talk about whatever you'd like, although we've already talked about all of them, but whatever you want.
Mr. Mayor, I'll move that we approve Resolution 2013.
Number 22.
Number 22, resolution of the City Council, the City of San Carlos, adopting City of San Carlos strategic plan.
Second.
It's moved in second and discussion. Go ahead.
Yeah, just had one, one quick question, actually, two quick questions. What has to do with, would it be difficult, the next time we see these, to get some kind of little chart that shows how many of the goals are due by month, or expect to be completed by month? I was trying to go through myself and do something like that, so I could see how the due dates were distributed. It looked to me like they might be kind of backend-loaded at this point, but, you know, and having the information, if it's easy to do, having the information would save me the trouble of doing that.
Well, I guess I'm not sure. Do you want them just to be arranged by date in terms of...
No, 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 just, just, it's, it's like, you know, of the, of the 53 things, six of them are in April, 12 of them are in May, 27 of them are in August, you know, that kind of...
Sort of like, I guess, the graph, you know, when you're doing a project, I think he wants one of those project things.
Timeline.
Timeline.
Right.
Yes, we could do that.
Okay.
I don't see that, that's going to be very difficult, based on the dates.
Through the chair.
Yeah.
One comment on that, my understanding is, we've always, the, the reason a lot of them are backloaded
Oh, yeah.
is because we're just trying to give staff
Time to do.
as much time, but as you even saw tonight, one of the items, we have already addressed, it, it's not meaning that they're all due on the same date, it's just saying, if it takes this much time, you have that much time. But it's up to staff and the city manager to meet those out and, and manage the workload.
The, the one question I had sort of related to that, and admittedly, this was one that I was particularly interested in, I, I had a question about on the, holding a city council study session to discuss and give direction, discuss and give direction regarding the development of a long-term integrated financial plan, that shows a due date of September 9. And I was just wondering why it was such a far-out due date, if it's to gather information and direction, as opposed to bring back a deliverable?
I'm not sure I can answer that one in particular.
Well, and it, through, if, Mr. Malby, if, apropos of Mr. Grokot's comment, if it's something that, the fact that the date's a September 9 doesn't mean it will be, it won't happen before then, I'm fine with that, I'm just...
But, I think that's correct. I, I think the reason, and Mrs. Mendenhall can jump in here and correct me if I'm wrong, but I think it was a workflow issue for the Administrative Services Department, who in the next few months has to transition, or potentially has to transition the fire department, all the employees into Redwood City, as well as go through the budget process of the city, that they were foreseeing that being a task that they'd like to
Push that, pass that, okay.
to get after they had accomplished those issues that seemed to be more pressing.
I was, I was, I was obviously aware of both of those things, I just, I guess I was thinking that the budget cycle this year might be a little less intense than last year because of being a biennial budget, but perhaps that's incorrect.
It, it tends to be for almost everybody, except for the Administrative Services Department that still has to go through all the internal
Right back here, Rebecca. All right, fair enough.
The workload is, is still there for, for our department.
That's, that's, that's fine, thank you.
And if, if, if we can bring it forward sooner, we will.
Okay, great.
Other questions, comments, otherwise, we'll move on. Any other questions or comments? Could I have a roll call vote on this item, please?
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grokot?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Mayor Grisilli?
Yes.
All right, moving on. 10D, consideration of introducing an ordinance, amending the San Carlos Municipal Code Title II, Administration and Personnel, Chapter 2.04, City Manager, Chapter 2.08, City Council, Chapter 2.09, City Clerk, and adding a chapter for the City Attorney. You get your own chapter, wow, cool.
Mr. Rubens. Councilmembers, this is part of our ongoing effort to bring municipal code updates and amendments to you. This one, there were some basic changes to these three, well, to the City Manager section. The highlights of the changes were to add some of his duties that, that we relied on him for, such as adding him as specifically as a labor negotiator, adding a provision for, that basically enables a section of the government code that, that allows you to authorize the City Manager to sign on your behalf if you approve a contract. It doesn't necessarily give him any more authority than in our purchasing ordinances, but it does mean that we do not have to add a specific clause to all of our resolutions that authorize him to sign, because it'll be in the City Manager Code section. The, some of the other were provisions, changes that you can see in the staff report and the red-line version of the City Manager portion, just as some clarifying language to different sections. We added a, a section about, also about supervision over public property, and those types of issues that just seem to make it more, make it more comprehensive. And there still could be other provisions that would allow for you, by contract, to add additional duties and responsibilities as they arise, so there's that flexibility that, that's there. Where I did not make many changes was towards the end, most, most of the changes were in the issue of the duties and responsibilities. I could take them one at a time, or I could just go over the three ordinance changes, if you have any questions about the City Manager portion. How would you like to handle it?
Speaking of myself, I'd be happy if, if you just did a brief overview and then answered questions.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I, I think, it's not clear to me, maybe you could point out to me, which of these are new and which are existing?
Okay.
Would that be helpful?
The City Manager, I attached, I made an attachment, one for the City Manager that has all the changes that are highlight and strike out. That, that's because the City Clerk provisions that we had were very limited, it just dealt with the amount of pay per meeting that the City Clerk received. And then, there was no City Attorney section before... And then, there was no City Attorney section before this proposal, so all of this, basically all of the City Clerk and all of the City Attorney portions are new.
Okay.
And the City Manager was changed somewhat substantially, but it's reflected in Attachment one, all the changes are there.
Okay, well, that's, that's what I'm looking at, but I'm wondering, you've got, we have A through N, and are all of those new items, or which of them?
No, there, well, some are, some of it was renumbering, but if you look at Attachment one, you can see the underlined portions is, is the new language, or the changed language.
Oh, in the, are you talking about where it says Chapter 2.04, and that says Sections? Or just anything that's new is underlined?
Anything that's news, underlined, and then the strikeout is where I deleted a word.
Oh, I, okay.
Or a sentence. Example of that is under Emergency Authority.
Mm-hmm.
I did a lot of strikeout there, because I was trying to tie the City Managers Authority with your, tonight's adopted Emergency Organization and Preparedness Ordinance. That has a very specific definition for what an emergency is, so I wanted to tie these two together. And, so that's why there's a lot of deletions in 2.04, .070, under Authority, because it's in another code section, but I think it was important enough to leave it in the City Manager section to provide, if people in an emergency are searching for the Authority, they'd have multiple places to find that. And then you could see that I deleted the dollar amount limitation under 070B, because of the age of this code, there was a $10,000 limit in an emergency for the City Managers Authority, which seemed unreasonably low under those circumstances, and in my experience in, in other cities, the, the costs that might be incurred by a City Manager are required to respond to an emergency with local resources, could easily be more than 10 times that, it just depends on the emergency, whether it's a landslide, or a fire, or, or, or earthquake.
Okay. All right, thank you.
So, other questions?
So, I had a, just a couple of questions, all relating to the City Manager. The portion that talks about acting City Manager, and being able to ask a department head to fill in during, during their absence. I guess my question is, is really addressing the, the concern that I had and that we went through at one point of discouraging having department heads be contractors. And I thought we had that discussion and came to a clarifying point, that we would avoid that kind of thing, and then to see it in here, I'm, I'm just trying to get clarification on it. I guess I could understand it in terms of, for instance, you know, Mr. Rothaus really works for the Sheriff's Department, and on occasion, the City Manager has put the police chief as the acting City Manager in his absence. Is that the kind of thing that we're looking at, or, or, you know, I just don't want to be thinking that we're creating some kind of gray area in the, I, I don't think we set a policy on that, but we certainly gave some pretty strong direction to the staff that we don't want to see department heads be contract employees, or, which is really not a, it's an incongruous term, contractors.
Well, I, I think, when I revised this language, I was working, if you can see, I was working with the existing language, so I just, I think I just reworked the way this, the section read, because it's, in the old version, or the existing version, excuse me, it does allow the City Manager to designate a contract person as a department head. You appoint me, I'm a contract consultant, if you will, and you pointed out that, that the Chief Rothaus is a, a contract, because he's an employee of the, of the sheriff, and we will, should the council decide, we might, well, actually, existing, you do have a fire chief that is an employee of another agency. So, I was trying to address the fact that we have some major departments that are under contract. It's flexible enough to allow, if the council decides to have other departments be contract departments, such as in the past when Neil Martin and Associates was a, a contract planning for the city, that, that could happen, but I think it's going to still require council direction in that regard, it just doesn't allow the City Manager to, to do that unless there's a, a change in organization that you've approved.
And staying with that paragraph, I remember having concerns when the, we, we had a City Manager depart, and appoint his designee during his period that he was going to be gone, because what happened was, the, the City Manager was, was leaving, and had accrued so much vacation time that they took a vacation, that took them through their departure date, and appointed somebody to act as City Manager during their vacation, but the, you see what I'm saying, there was an, there was.
I, I remember that well.
And, and I wasn't very pleased by that, I thought, you know, if, if the, if the person's going to be leaving employment, it seems that it would be right for the council to make that interim appointment, and there's, there doesn't seem to be anything here that clarifies that.
Well, it, it does, I, I was trying to clarify, because I, I think there was, I recall that there was some confusion among members of the public, and, and in the interpretation of the way it was, is currently worded. So, I thought I would make an effort at clarifying the circumstances where the City Manager would appoint an acting City Manager in his temporary absence, as opposed to when the City Manager has permanently separated from the city. So, that's the distinction I'm drawing in, in this proposed language. And, so I think it, I think it works, if you think about what the, what the acting manager is going to be, that is truly for a temporary situation where the, the City Manager might be on vacation, or suffering a temporary illness, as opposed to when the City Manager, as, as occurred when Mr. Weiss, he, he had a, he basically permanently separated, he retired.
Mm-hmm.
And so, we're addressing that, I think just cleaning up that language will kind of take away any possible misunderstanding of the difference between an acting and an interim.
So, so you are feeling that the language here is strong enough, such that if we had that situation again, where vacation time overlapped separation time, we, as a council, could step in and say, we want to make that appointment?
And, and I think last time, I may be recollecting this incorrectly, Councilmember Grocott, but I think at the la, when the issue came up before, it wasn't that the City Manager appointed his successor, it was, the action, that night when that question came up, was the council appointing the, the interim City Manager. It was not a situation where the, the manager had appointed an acting, and then you.
Had to override.
That was the final say in it, it was that you were being asked to, to select an interim while you were recruiting a permanent.
I remember it being uncomfortable.
Yeah.
Yeah, so, okay. And then, let's see, my last question is more for a clarification, I just want to make sure this is not the scenario. It, on the, almost the last page, under removal, where it talks about removal, and it says, "With or without cause, shall be affected only by a majority vote of the entire city council as then constituted, convened in a council meeting." And what that says to me is, if there's, if there's five of us here, but, you know, we're trying to do a coup attempt or something, and there's only three of us in town, and we decide to have a rushed city council meeting while the other two are out of town, so that easily we could have a majority vote, even just two of us could, you know, vote the City Manager out of business, that can't take place. What you're talking, if I understand this, as so constituted, that includes the two who are on vacation and out of town?
And it could, it also, it requires three. Even if there was an, someone who, even if there was an office that hadn't been filled yet.
Yeah.
You'd still require three, or if there were two vacancies in office.
Oh, okay.
There'd still be three votes, because the Constitution is, there's, it's a five-member body.
Gotcha.
That's the way I interpret that.
Good, that's the way I was hoping it would be, and I, I, you know, he, he didn't give me that question, I just, you know.
You're smiling a lot.
Okay, other questions?
It.
Yes, go, why don't we just get questions here?
Okay, sure.
Yeah.
Thank you. Actually, first one was sparked by something that Councilmember Grocott brought up. In the paragraph where you're talking about the acting City Manager, was one of the issues, the first issue you were bringing up, Mr. Grocott, the concern about the City Manager appointing to act as his interim, a person who is a contract employee, or, and so, so there's a dual loyalty problem, is, was that what you were thinking of?
No, we had given direction from this council at one point to staff, that we were pretty much through with having department heads who were contractors.
Okay.
And, so, my question was, I don't want to believe that this language sends a different message from this council, or any council, that we're no longer under that direction.
Okay. Um, in, in that regard, though, if Mr. Malby were to appoint Chief Rothaus to act as his, there, what does the law, what's the governing law about the possibility of conflicting loyalties there? Or conflicting duties, I think is the correct term.
Well, are, are you thinking of incompatible offices, or?
Yeah, if I was thinking of it in terms of an elected official, that's probably what I would be, that's what I would call it.
Well, I think, you know, I think that's a consideration that the, the City Manager would be taking into account when appointing someone as an acting in his absence. You know, in the fact that the Chief of Police is a, is a county employee, in 99% of the cases, isn't going to make any difference, but there may be, I suppose, a, a contract, like tonight, you had a contract amendment for the sheriff on your agenda, that might be something that someone else might need to present on behalf of.
So, we, we deal with that as a, on a case-by-case basis?
Yeah, I would think so.
Okay.
And I may not have answered the question completely, and maybe I missed the, the point about the contract employee, but it does, that, that does sometimes happen, because the, the, the person who's available at that time might be just a department head who's a contract employee.
Second one was on Item M in City Manager 2.04-060, so it's the last, second to the last item, is the one I talked to you about this afternoon, Mr. Rubens, which is that, the word council in the second to the last line, probably ought to be city council.
Yeah, I'll, I'll look through it again, I, after we talked, I saw there might be a couple of other places where I want to, we should make the terms consistent.
And, and we can introduce this subject to you going through and making those kind of corrections and incorporate, we don't have to specifically list them all, do we?
No, we do not, and that, that would be under the typographic error that can be corrected between.
And I will leave my other ones out, and I will just give them to you. Last one was, again, something you and I had talked about, I just want to make sure that we're all clear on, on what it says, and that has to do with the City Clerk under 2.09-030 functions, I think that's where it is, page seven. My understanding was that we, we want to be able to have the City Clerk actually appoint a delegate, or somebody to act in his or her authority at these meetings, like we're having now, to be doing the record-keeping and doing the clerk duties. And, it's not explicitly identified in the language that the position has that authority to delegate, and you had pointed me to Item B1, saying that the City Manager can excuse the clerk, I think it was B1, can excuse the clerk from it, and it's left unsaid, somebody has to do the job, so presumably he'd appoint him. If everybody's fine with that, is providing sufficient flexibility to do the delegation, that's great, if we need to clean that up a little bit, that's why I bring it up.
I think in practice, what you'd have is the City Clerk making a recommendation, and the City Manager really is the, the authority that makes a decision who is going to cover the meeting, and that's what that's.
Form of duty, yeah.
That's what's intended by that section.
Okay.
Okay, so, barring any further questions, I'll.
There's no question on the City Attorney one?
No. I'll look for a motion to introduce this ordinance.
We move that we introduce ordinance.
1457?
Excuse me?
1457.
1457, of, uh, Chapter 2.04 for the City Manager, Chapter, let me find it.
09.
209.
209 for the City Clerk, and 2.0.
No, 2.11.
2.11, sorry, for the City Attorney.
To the Municipal Code.
To the Municipal Code.
Second.
All right, moved in second, and further discussion. Very done, roll call, please.
Councilmember Clapper?
Yes.
Councilmember Collins?
Yes.
Councilmember Grocott?
Yes.
Councilmember Olbert?
Yes.
Yes, now, no adjournment, but we're going to be moving into closed session, so we will adjourn later.